This morning. Any takers? Okay, none, then we'll move on to approve the minutes from our meeting on November, Personnel Session on November 20th and Workshop Meeting on 26th.
Second.
Motion second, questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. And I would notify just before the meeting, we have a last minute item that we need to add to the agenda, and that is a, an item for nutritional support at Renova Center, so we'll entertain a motion to add that agenda item for discussion. Approved. I'll move ahead.
Second, that's for the dietician.
Correct.
Because it says Cedar Haven, I think she might remember this somewhere.
Cedar Haven, I think is part of the contract, so, anyway, we'll get to that. So, any questions, comments? If not, all in favor adding that to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. We'll do that at the end, during your session with Amy. Okay. Bias, can you introduce yourself for the record and then proceed with your report?
Good morning, Tina, it's Bias, Happy Treasure. We started our cash balance with eight hundred thirty thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars, nine cents. We had receipts of two million four hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and nine cents. That brought our cash to three million two hundred forty-eight thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and eighteen cents, less our expenditures of two million eight hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars, eighty-two cents, less our tax plan, which was eleven thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars, eighty-two cents, which brought our final cash balance this morning of three hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred forty dollars and fifty-four cents.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second, questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. As well, can you have anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, please introduce yourself for the record and then proceed with your report.
Michelle E. Snively, November Reviewing Resources. Under Personnel Transactions, Resignations and Terminations, Teresa Hildebrand, Admin Case Manager Two, Area Agency on Aging Retirement, effective February 3rd, 2026. Bethany Rissinger-Powell, Part-Time Meal Transporter, Area Agency on Aging, Recent Opera of Employment, effective December 1st. Harold Alexander, Casework Supervisor One, Children and Youth Termination, effective November 25th. Christina Cologne, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, Resignation, effective November 26th, Class Working Day, November 22nd. Kathy Burke, Victim Advocate, District Attorney's Office Retirement, effective January 29th, 2026. Maritza Val Perez, Office Support Two/ Interpreter in Domestic Relations, Resignation, effective November 20th. Jonathan Gutierrez, Adult Probation Officer One, Probation Services, Resignation, effective December 10th. Susan Christner, Juvenile Deputy Director of Probation Services, Resignation, effective January 16th, 2026. Alyssa Piles, General Clerk C, Parsonatary Clerk of Courts, Resignation, effective December 5th. Tanisha Lopez, Therapy Aid at the Renova Center, Termination, No Call, No Show, effective November 19th.
May I just ask a question before I make the motion? Is Susan Christner a resignation or a retirement? Because she was here since 96.
She's not old enough to retire.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a resignation.
My dad, okay. Then I'll make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations and also call out Teresa Hildebrand and Kathy Burke for their tenure with the county as well.
I'll second the motion and add the high-quality service that they all provided will be missed. Three people with 22, 18, 30 years, parents were leaving some, some, good people. So, any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. It's approved.
Moving on to Changes of Status Transfers and Promotions, I have a motion to approve Director of Domestic Relations, Michael Anderson's request with the support of President Judge Toawak to create a temporary full-time training supervisor position within the Domestic Relations Department for a current employee to provide overlap training for a maximum of four weeks effective December 8th.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, questions, comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side.
Holly Whitmer, Promotion from Caseworker One in Children and Youth, the Caseworker Two in Children and Youth, at the rate of one thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents by weekly, effective December 7th. Allison Jones, Transfer from Training Supervisor in Domestic Relations to Judicial Assistant in Courts at the rate of twenty-one dollars, and that is the 2026 rate, and that is effective January 5th, 2026. Courtney Binkley, Promotion from Admin Assistant Two in Domestic Relations to Training Supervisor in Domestic Relations at the rate of one thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy cents by weekly, effective December 8th.
So, move.
I'll second the motion. Motion second, questions, comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, and that is approved.
Under Other Transactions, President Judge Toawak would like to hire Mayland Click as Office Support Two in Domestic Relations at the rate of sixteen dollars and forty-six cents per hour, that is the 2026 rate, effective January 5th, 2026. Parsonatary Clerk of Courts would like to hire Deanna Jo Wilkerson as a General Clerk C at the rate of one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty cents by weekly, effective December 9th.
I'll move to approve those transactions as presented.
Second.
Second, questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, and those transactions are approved.
Moving on to Salary Board, if there are no questions regarding the transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt those transactions onto the Salary Board?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, questions, comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, and those are the Board. Anything else? Thank you, thanks, Michelle. Brings us to the infamous Mr. Shot.
Infamous? Oh, my.
How are you?
We'll try not to state all of them, infamous.
If you would, please introduce yourself for the record.
John Shot, Office of Probation Services and Terminal Justice Advisory Board.
Chris White, Deputy Director of Probation, the Attorney.
You may proceed.
Thank you Chairman Coon, and good morning, everybody. Now, we're here this morning to request your authorization to apply to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for funding to continue the county's very proactive intermediate punishment programs for fiscal year 2025, 2026. The funding announcement wasn't released until after the state had adopted a new budget, so obviously we're well into the new fiscal year. But the county's intermediate punishment program does give eligible offenders an alternative to incarceration. That includes the county's three specialty treatment courts, DUI, drug, and veterans. You have before you an advanced draft of the budget we are preparing, but it is not a final document, but it does cover the various areas that aligns with, complies with the parameters of the grant, including supervision, treatment, and case management. And we'll continue to update the budget figures and the narratives and other required sections of the application before submitting a final version of the application to the Commission on December 18th, which is the deadline. And the good news about this funding program, as has been the case in the past, there's no local funding match required. That's always good news, so, we respectfully ask for your authorization to proceed, but the application is submitted to the Commission on Crime and Delinquency by December 18th, at the latest.
I'll make a motion to approve your application for the Commission on Crime and Delinquency.
And I'll second the motion. Motion second, questions or comments? Are you none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, you have that approval.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Very welcome, thank you for the work you do.
Good morning, I'm here to present the grant application for the County, continuing County Adult Probation Program. The goal of the Continuing County Adult Probation Program Funding Opportunity is to support and improve the adult probation and parole services at the county level during fiscal year 25, 26, funding would utilize to offset department personnel expenses for the adult unit. One good thing is the increase from this fiscal year to next fiscal year went from ninety-seven thousand seven one one to a hundred eleven thousand dollars, a hundred eleven thousand forty-nine dollars, and there is also no local match. Just asking for the Commissioners to accept and to support our application.
I will move.
Second.
Motion second, questions or comments? Are you none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, you have that approval.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do. Anyone else, gentlemen?
Have a good holiday.
Thank you, me too.
Thank you so much.
Amy, you have a floor, anything you have to present?
Nothing.
You have an extra? Okay. So, as a result of the process, up here about the 2026 County of Lebanon budget, the process began in, in October with some hearings, a week's worth of hearings with departments coming in, we've, we've worked on it here and there since then, trying to tweak a few things to reduce the deficit. For review, we started off with about a $6 million deficit gap between revenues and expenses. By the end of the week of hearings, we were at about $5 million. We worked a little more on it, accounted for some vacancies, made some adjustments, fine-tuning the salary study implementation, and ended up with a deficit of four and a half million dollars. So, with that, I'll, if it's all right, I'll go through everything here, if the Commissioners have comments following, then we'll do it that way. I'm going to start with the, with the summary. I will touch on the one that has the pie charts, I'll focus more so on the, on the PowerPoint. Sorry to have so many handouts here, but some of it's redundant, just, just being presented in a different way, but, so, for 2026, the Lebanon County budget is being proposed at one hundred thirteen million eight hundred twenty-eight dollars, eight hundred twenty-eight thousand seventy-six dollars. The general fund expenses are increasing by 5.66% to sixty-seven million nine twenty-five three eight two. Overall, general fund revenues sources are increasing slightly by 1.1 million or 1.95%. That is a little better than we've been seeing over the last few years. Growth in the assessed value of properties is going up by 3%. Some of that, or a good part of that, is attributable to some tax-avated properties that were granted LERTAs several years ago, expiring now and returning to the tax rolls at their full value, so that's why we're seeing more than the typical percent or percent and a half that we have been seeing in, in assessed value growth. The proposed budget, as before you, includes an increase in millage of two tenths of a mil, which is four and a half percent as a percentage. I'll get into some dollar impacts to property tax, or property orders later. The last real estate millage increase took place in the 2024 budget. With that proposed two tenths of a mil, it still requires some cash to balance the budget, about 2.3 million, or 2,298,581 to be exact, in cash carryover. Those are set asides for 2026 payrolls. We've talked a lot about those the last several weeks with the state budget impasse that we were dealing with. We were using some of that cash to keep the county in business and payrolls and payables, et cetera. Some of that, a portion of that, a little less than I had hoped by now, has come back from the state since the impasse, but we're still waiting on several million dollars to be replenished to us. But that is the source of carryover or reserves that we use and can use to balance this budget, 2.3 million. Potentially, you could go to four and a half million, but deficits compound, and I'll have a table that shows you a little bit later what we've been dealing with. Deficits compound, they don't go away on their own. They either need to be cut away or revenue raised to cover it, and if we were to dip further than this into our cash, I believe that at this time next year, you'd be facing, probably starting off with a seven or eight million dollar deficit, and even if you're able to trim that back, you wouldn't have the cash to cover that next year. You'd be facing a larger increase. To be, to be frank, each time the last, I would say, two or three millage increases have happened, they've all been double-digit. Some of them have started with a two, in double digits, and we often hear that if it must be done, it would be better if it were a smaller increase, something that's more manageable than a heavier weight until it's double digits. So, that's the main reason this is being proposed. Number one, I believe the cash is going to, would be dwindled too far by the, by this time next year, and number two, it, it is manageable as much as you can say that these days for household budgets. In 2025, the Commissioners initiated, some of the reasons for the increases I'll talk about now. 2025 Commissioners initiated a second salary study in just four years. The market had changed so drastically between 2020 and 2024 that it was felt that it was needed for continued recruitment and retention and reinvestment in our workforce, which is more than 70% of, of the cost of, of running a county government. We did a study of wages of surrounding counties and, and other industries in the area, that is complete, and implementation of that study will occur in 2026. Some upward adjustments will occur to some salaries, will be maintenance of others, and all this is in order to have a scale that weighs appropriately on retaining employees through the first several years with the county when we tend to see the most turnover. We have seen a decrease in vacancies, that's, that's a help and a hindrance. Number one, it's, it's a help because we don't have as much mandated overtime, for example, at the jail. Something we often hear from the employees is it's a quality of life issue, it's a security and a safety issue, if you've got people working 16-hour shifts. For example, we are back up in our, in our contingent at the jail. We are just dealing right now with the usual turnover that you would face any other time, with three, four, five, six at a time, just from, from organic turnover. So, that has helped a lot to have fewer vacancies. On the other hand, last couple of years, we've been able to deduct from the budget to account for some vacancies, and that was the ability to just take a little bit off the top, so to speak, knowing that we were going to have vacancies because of the way the job market was. But that's changing, and we don't have as many vacancies, so therefore, we can't make those deductions. Police salary increases for 2026 are as follows. Non-union is going to be somewhere around an average of 3%. It's hard for me to say exactly because the salary market study is being implemented, and it's going to be all over the board a bit, and it's going to be at least an average of 3%. Court-related non-professionals, 3.5%, social services, 4%, county detectives, 3.5%. Chocolate workers, which is the car and emergency services, telecommunications, had a new chart employed as a result of the most recent contract that was signed, and those wages are averaging on a 3.8 to 6% increase. So, it's, again, I can't pin it down, it's not across the board, it varies. The other three unions, court-appointed professionals, ASME, and the newly, newly-created Deputy Sheriff's Association are all in negotiations, so we don't have a number of them. There have been no newly-funded positions for 2026. There was earlier in 2025, about midway through the year, you had approved for 2026 a Domestic Relations Services contracted attorney to be converted to a full-time staff attorney, but there was a slight savings to that because the hourly rate for the contract ended up being a little bit more than we can actually do it for the, for a full-time equivalent. Employee health insurance premiums for county employees are increasing by 14.5%. That is one of the largest increases we've seen in several years in terms of dollars, that's an increase of 1.6 million dollars. We saw, I think, if I recall, about 8% last year, the year before, we did really well with only about a 2% increase. Medical inflation is what it is everywhere, and the same is true of the jails, you'll hear in a moment. The actuarially determined contribution to the pension fund is being fully budgeted, again, as it has been, at 3,350,000. This is an increase of 300,000 over 2025. Again, that is budgeted to be paid from the general fund revenues and agency reimbursements. This keeps up with the payments in the pension fund, it's critical to maintaining a sufficiently funded pension for current and future retirees. We stand at about an 85% funded ratio, which is healthy. The county's contract with Crime Care Medical for comprehensive healthcare services is being renewed with a 14% increase, that is now a cost of 4.2 million dollars, plus, plus additional costs attributable to the expansion of the medication-assisted treatment, but some of those costs are being offset by some grants that we can access. The Vivitrol Grant, for example, can be used for, now for MAT treatment. Again, 14% there, 14.5% on, on healthcare for employees, is a trend. Some of the notable capital projects, continuing to add security cameras and access, and, and improve access control at the jail for 400,000. Replacement of the jail's hot water boilers, which have far exceeded their useful life, when I say far exceeded, these is, this is original equipment to the jail, so we're looking at nearly 50-year-old boilers at the jail that are finally being replaced, that are just no longer serviceable. So, those with heat, along with heating controls, is a cost of 412,000. We have Go Live support and archiving for the 2026 implementation of our new finance payroll purchasing and HR system, which we purchased this year and budgeted for this year in 2025. That Go Live support is 199,800, and we will continue with planned renovations of the former city offices and former DES offices downstairs, however, that is being done with pre-allocated ARPA funding. I will move to, I guess I'll briefly move to the, to the handout with the county seal on the front that has some pie charts in it showing the breakdown of funds budgeted by department, et cetera. It shares some of the percentages that I gave in the, in the narrative, shows the general fund and what portion of the budget that is. On the third page there, for example, 5.66% increase in the general fund, I noted that, so, so these things all match up with the, the narrative IDA 24. And the last couple of pages are a glossary of sorts that tells you what budgets fall, or what departments fall into which groups. But I want to focus next on the PowerPoint presentation that has the courthouse on the On the first inside page, some of these are redundant, but, again, health insurance costs increasing 14.5%, salary study is noted there, real estate assessed value growth of 3%, but there are a couple of other things that we are continuing to maintain contributions for farmland preservation, for libraries, parks, and historical society. There's an increase, a significant increase in county support to agencies, that is increasing by 28%, and if those of you who were here a couple of months ago, back in October, when children and youth and juvenile probation presented their budget, you'll recall there was a significant, or is a significant increase in the cost of juvenile probation providers, providers for placements, thank you. It, you know, in many cases, those are double-digit increases, and it's something that's being, being experienced across the state, we're not alone in Lebanon County, but it is not something we had much choice in. If we're going to place juveniles in detention and, and other sorts of placements, it is a costly doing that business, and that has contributed significantly to the county general fund support to those agencies and to those expenses. Again, there's another pie chart similar to the other handout, breaking down the different costs by department and by category. Next page is a pie chart of expenses by function. Some of the capital plans that I talked about earlier, that adds to that some repairs to the brickwork here at the courthouse, and the cooling tower on the roof of the building, which is now about 23 years old, is in need of some mechanical repairs, so we'll be doing those. The next page is the one I want to really focus on here, this is the proposed increase and the impact that would have, along with a, a chart that shows what happens and what we've been experiencing in terms of deficits and millage increases. So, let me start with that one, start with the, the chart. In 2021, there was a millage increase, and you can see then in 2022, there was still a deficit of about a half a million dollars that was made up with cash. No increase for 2023, you can see then the deficit increased to almost two and a half million dollars. However, there was a millage increase at the end of that year for 2024, and you can see the result is we get back up to balance, actually slightly above, a couple hundred thousand dollars above being structurally balanced. But then again, we dropped in 2025 down to 3 million dollars, and these are all increased costs due to inflation, due to increases like the juvenile probation I talked about, mostly personnel-type, type costs as well. Then in 2026, as I described at the beginning, we started at 6 million dollars, kind of ended up after a month or two at four and a half million dollars, which is where we would be without a millage increase. You'd be dipping in four and a half million dollars into cash if you chose to do it that way, but again, that's a, that's dangerous territory with not very much cash left to weather through state budget impasses, federal budget impasses. If anyone thinks we're not going to have more state budget impasses, raise your hand. I'm not, I'm not one of those that believes we will, next year's a gubernatorial election, the politics will probably be even heavier than they were this year, and so I would anticipate we'll be, we'll be finding ourselves trying to get through another one next summer and fall. However, if you apply a two-tenths percent, a two-tenths of a mil, millage increase to that, it reduces it to 2.3 million dollars needed in cash, leaving us basically at this time next year, the same place we probably started this year, is my prediction, is, you know, we're still going to have inflation, we're still going to have increases, it just, it just saves, saves a deficit next year that may lead to a double-digit tax increase if you, if you, if you don't do something this year. So, those are, those are my facts and, and the proposal that you have on the table. I'm happy to answer any questions. I want to thank Angel, she's joining us here to help me with any questions I probably, I can't answer them, but she's, she's responsible for these handouts and, and does a great job and is right there whenever needed.
So, before we begin any motion, I think we'll just open it up for discussion, thoughts. Are you none? Ladies first. Any questions for Jamie, anything in the budget?
No, this is the third time I've heard it.
Yeah? Is there anything in the budget you think we need to revisit or a cluster?
I had said I did not want to, I had said I did not want to make a comment at this time.
Thank you. At first, I'd like to thank Angel and Tina, Jamie, of course, but, you know, just a lot of work goes into this, I thought it was a very professional, thoughtful, and responsible approach, and I think what you've presented is a good compromise. We're not doing a structurally balanced budget, as I prefer, but it, it gets us there with not leaving all our cash. but it gets us there with not eating at all our cash. And also, if it's a modest, as people have, you know, told us over the years, don't wait till it's, you know, high double digits to, you know, below 20 or around 20%. Do it in small increments. In this case, I think, believe it or not, the average house in Lebanon County market value is between 350 and 400,000 dollars, based on our 50,000 parcels. But the, the cost of this increase is probably, for that level of houses, probably 70 dollars a year in that range. I think that's a defensible approach. I think that, yes, there is a lot of struggling out there, but we've, through this 11, last 11 months, we've approved labor contracts and we've approved vendors and replacements. Jamie mentioned with juvenile offenders, you know, the alternative is that you don't want them back in the community. These will be high-end arsonists and so on that are just too dangerous to have among us. And so they have to be, you know, taken care of in a safe facility till they're 18 years old. That's the kind of challenge, that's just one piece of it. But we could not do the boilers that are 50 years old and see how, how we look along with that. I'm glad Tina's not here to hear that. Security cameras, you know, staff cuts. We're trying to invest in our employees, so that's where we came up with, you know, supporting the study. And now we're going to fully implement that study in one year. The last study, we implemented over a couple of years and it wasn't as intense or comprehensive a study as, as this one was. So this is what we're trying to do to improve the ability to hire quality people and retain them. So those kind of things all come in press. But here we are, and I appreciate everything that's gone into this. And we are also eating the 1.4 million increase in our healthcare plan. That's another big chunk that we are not changing deductibles for most of our employees, and we're not changing co-pays, and there's no premium share. So these are all things that, that package is probably not shy about mentioning it. It's probably 40,000 dollars for a family plan, for our healthcare plan. So that's a huge, you know, part of our benefit package. So I think it's a good, solid compromise using part cash, part tax increase. No one likes to have a tax increase, but you also have to be responsible as an elected official to, you know, meet what's before you. So that's, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I think I just, I have the jitters every time I do a budget and I think that got to me here. I didn't go over the impact.
Right.
Okay? I meant to do that. So I talked about the deficit and surplus table, but the, but the impact of this proposed two-tenths of a mill on property owners, these numbers, by the way, are in a market value, not an assessed value. We often talk about assessed value. I'm not really sure how much the average homeowner pays attention to their assessed value, but there's a good chance they know what their home is worth on the market. So we've converted these to market value using the common level ratio. So on a, on a market value home of 200,000 dollars, this increase would represent 21, 22 dollars a year. On a home valued at 350,000 dollars, it would be about 38 dollars. And a 500,000 dollar home would be 54 dollars. So, you know, I didn't go beyond that because I think those are, those are pretty good ranges. There aren't too many homes out there for sale anymore under 200,000 dollars. And as Mr. Phillips alluded, the average home in Lebanon County now is about 350,000. So the average would be about 38 dollars a year increase to the two, two-tenths of a mill. Thank you for that extra. I meant to say that earlier.
May I just clarify?
Yeah.
Mine was for funding the deficit. I was mentioning 70, 80 dollars.
A few comments echo a lot of what Bob said again. I've been giving this a lot, a lot of thought over the last several weeks, the hearings. And as Bob, nobody ever wants to make a tax increase, but I've been in public office. This is my third budget in the county, but it was 328 of them on the school district and very similar types of situations. And one of the things that Jamie did not mention, I asked him a couple of weeks ago to compare us to some other counties. Again, we only had a couple of days to do this, and we only have a couple of them. One of the things that I looked at as a school board member was to compare our school district to all the other 22 school districts in the IU and what was our per pupil expenditures. For me, that was a good barometer to show, were we competitive in providing good value to the taxpayers compared to ours? And I just asked Jamie to just look at her capita spending in some other counties and just providing two. Like Leomin County is almost 1,100, Franklin County is almost 1,000 dollars, and ours is under 800 dollars. So I, I just, again, based on those two, and that's more scientific and thorough, but just a little bit of a barometer for me to know, we are currently providing good value. I believe if we looked at other counties, I think that would stay true. I think the commissioners from many years before me have done a good job in that. And Bob said, you have an obligation too. And as Jamie said, nobody has crystal balls. But we'll, we'll have an interesting time in December to see if the feds can pass a continuing resolution again when we look at what, what happened in the last half year with the federal budget. And, and in July, I'm not a betting man, but I'm siding with Jamie that I don't, I, I think it's going to be a very difficult budget time, again, at the state level. And I don't want to put us in a position that many other counties were in last year after that couple of months of budget impasse that they were forced to borrow money and pay interest rates that, you know, cost taxpayers even more. So I believe this is a responsible and it's about a compromised effort and something I'm willing to support. Your own last chance, any comments?
I think it would be more appropriate to comment after the vote.
Okay, yeah, so Matt, I'm just asking if you would prefer later, that's fine. So Jamie has a proposal on the table, a 0.2% mill increase.
Two-tenths of a mill, so if you're inclined to make a motion for that, then the motion would be to place the 2026 budget on display at a millage rate of 3.5925. Four, yeah, four, I'm sorry, 4.5925 mills, which we have prepared to put out there. That would be the motion.
I'll swing. Second. I'll call second motion and then we'll open it up for comments.
Over the past several months, weeks, and months with budget, I was pointing out some things that I'd like to see done before we got to this point. And some of those things were not done, most specifically bidding. We have two companies, Prime Care and Benicon, who are increasing their rates to us 14 and 14 and a half percent. That is unacceptable not to bid those out, in my opinion. So that's part of my thought. Another part is that the state didn't follow the law and pass their budget on time. So therefore, I think would behoove us, if, if we're losing roughly, I don't know, if could, on 15 million, that 4%, I know Fulton, Lebanon Federal Credit Union, and I think it's Bank of Burdenhand, all were paying at least 4% interest. And we could have been drawing that interest. It doesn't make sense that we had to spend our money when we had a good budget from last year and the state didn't, you know, offer to send us. So I think we should ask the state for the interest at the rate of at least 4%. And they should reimburse us for that. If nobody asks, they're not going to just voluntarily give it. But I think we should ask because they didn't pass their budget on time. And so essentially, they were working with our money because they kept raking it in through sales tax and everything else. So, you know, here we sit with this, facing this budget deficit. And part of it is because we didn't get that money. There's so much I could go on and say, but I think I've hit the top two. There were others that I asked, you know, that's not doing increases here or there, but I gave you the main ones. So because I don't think we were responsible, especially in bidding, some of the larger contracts that we have, I, I just, I'm sorry, I can't vote for this budget.
Shaky.
I just make a clarification, Benicon is our broker for health insurance.
Okay.
Blue Cross is the carrier, so the rate increases come from Blue Cross.
That's fine.
It's hard to bid the carrier.
They represent them, yeah.
Yes.
May I comment on the Prime Care? We did discuss that and the prevailing thought was that if you put that out for bid, you're opening up yourself for potential higher costs. You're not going to get it for free, and you're probably, you're not going to get it for less, in my opinion. And that was the consensus at the time of the discussion. So it's not that you're going to save 3 million dollars by bidding it because you're not, in the market that we're in, the feeling at the time was that we are not going to save any money. It's likely to cost us more if we open it up. So that's my, my takeaway from that discussion. And so that's why I wouldn't put that on the table as a, you have to have good healthcare protection down there, but the cost of not having it is even higher.
Well, let me, let me add one piece that I did forget to mention. It's a little bit of a shell game. If we raise 2% this year and next year 2%, that's really a total of 6% increase. You know, 2 gets carried forward, so that's another 2, plus 2 is 6%. And so it's a little disingenuous to say we're doing 2% because that 2% till next year is really 4% plus another 2%. I don't think, I mean, my mind thinks this way, maybe everybody's doesn't. But I don't think we're being truthful with the public about 2% this year, 2% next year. It's really a total of 6% interest over two years that we would be raising taxes.
I don't think anybody here is suggesting what our budget next year will require as far as an increase or could. We could theoretically decrease at that point. So anyway, we're talking about this year's budget and what we need to do to, in my opinion, to pass a responsible budget that puts us in a good position in case we weather some storms.
It's two-tenths, two-tenths of a mill, 4% this year.
Okay, yes, two-tenths, I said percent, two-tenths, you're right. But the point is, it's triple, not double till next year.
If we choose to do something next year, that's a decision we have to make at that time, based on the best facts we have at that time.
Well, I heard Jamie say we're going to be in the same place next year as we are this year, so.
I thought you said maybe worse. It all depends on what you do now.
Again, we're not immune to the cost of inflation. We know everybody's feeling that impact, and we're not immune to it in county services.
I'm not sure I understand the deception that is, you know, with the public, that we're really deceiving them. It's not just a 2% or whatever, you know, I, I think that the public understands. If you do 4% this year and you do 4% next year, that's, you're still carrying the previous. I don't think that's a good excuse for not supporting this budget, but I digress.
Any additional comments, question?
I have a question. I mean, is it, is Commissioner Litz's assertion that the budget, the state budget impasse is why, you know, you're in this position where you need to raise the millage, is that, is that even accurate portion?
There's, there is definitely lost interest on the money we used. I haven't done that calculation, but you're talking about, to use her numbers, say a 4% return on.
15 million?
We, I don't think we used 15 million. We used, you know, we used about, about 7 million. So.
For a limited period.
For, yes, for, for maybe for a month or two months that we started to dip into that. So you have to do a calculation on the interest.
We also had to use the money that would have gone into the new year. So we used more than three months' worth of money that we had set aside. That's where I came up with 15 million.
I think you maybe double counting.
I think that would be about 50,000 dollars a month.
Okay, I'm not sure, but.
And with regard to the, the properties that had Lerdas on them that have expired, that actually, I mean, I'll be the first to admit, I hate Lerdas. I hate having to, to offer them as an incentive for development. But that being said, it appears that it paid off because now they're back on tax rolls at an assessed value that includes the, the improvements that they've made. So it kind of worked out, I guess.
That's a blip, it depends on timing, so we cannot expect that for next year, but.
Yeah, that's kind of, sure, I hate Lerdas too, but if you don't, again, that's what, if you're going to compete, you know, in an open market, you know, with other counties or other states, you know, these are things that the developers are looking for, if you don't offer them, but eventually it pays off. Any other questions, comments?
Jamie, do you have an idea of what a 1-mill increase would impact?
One full mill is 11.1 million dollars. So a tenth of a mill is about, is about 1.1. That's why the two-tenths of a mill, we're looking at about 2.2, 2.3 million dollars. So one full mill is over 11 million, we're talking in tence here.
So it's basically cutting our deficit, current deficit in half and filling the rest with cash. So we're completing some of our cash.
Yep, we still are, yeah.
But we're not eliminating it, so we're not in a desperate position in July, August, or September.
I have two questions. One, was the program requested by the VA's office for 50,000 dollars to combat human trafficking? Is that part of the budget? If so, what is the amount being budgeted and where is that in the budget?
Yes, it's in, it's in, it's in the VA's office.
In our budget?
Yeah. At 50,000.
At 50,000. And the second question is, the county hired a law firm to defend children and youth services. Is there funding in the budget for that? If so, where are those funds located and how much has been allocated in the budget to combat the, the charges that may come against any COAS workers by the law firm that you hired?
So our solicitor's lucky enough to have that in his budget. We, we budget for all of our legal costs under the solicitor's budget, so we put labor legal costs in there as well, even though that's not something that's directly done by him. So, so yes, there was an amount put in there for, to account for that. 20,000 dollars was added to the solicitor's budget to account for that. We don't have, I don't think we have an accurate estimate.
We haven't even received our first invoice yet.
Yeah, that was an estimate that Matt and I talked about and.
So in theory, that's something that could go down or it's something that.
A placeholder.
But as of now, today, no invoices so far.
Just one last question. The jail is in the general fund. The, the jail is in the general fund.
Correct.
What percentage of the general fund is jail?
Hang on, I think I can, maybe I can mental math that. Pardon? Yeah. Uh, yeah, as you said, it's seven, seventeen million of the sixty-seven million is jail, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
So then, let's see, seventeen million, well, sixty-seven, three.
It's like a quarter.
It was thirty percent.
Yeah.
I could give you an exact number.
Is that, is that up, down, average?
It's up.
It's up?
I could get you a comparison to last year or two if you need.
Sorry.
Okay.
And is, would the, would the increase be because of the increase in the Prime Care contract?
That along with, yes, along with the capital, the, the boilers and the cameras and security upgrades.
Okay.
And wages.
Our building's how many years old?
Nineteen seventy-eight.
Close to that.
Are there, one other question. Are there actually any, I thought at one time, incredibly wrong, are there other people out there who have actually bid this work? I know Commissioner Litz is calling for it to be rebid, the healthcare as a prison, but am I mistaken, or are there actually a quantifiable number of vendors too actually bid that work?
There are. Prime Care is, is the foremost in Pennsylvania. There are other vendors that are in other parts of the country. I think York County just went with one of them.
Prime Care is in many counties in Pennsylvania.
Yeah, Prime Care is in a lot of the counties. There's an, there's another one. There's a vendor that just took on two central pieces of Pennsylvania counties. I can find out the other one for you, I don't want to guess. York is one.
Dolphin.
Dolphin, yes, Dolphin, thank you. Yeah, there was a lot of news about that, yeah. Same vendor.
Any other questions, comments?
I have one, sorry. And maybe you said it, Jamie. What, what is the total cash on hand and reserves?
We.
You say them two separate ways and then different numbers, so you're taking two point three out of?
Right now, out of seven million. We have seven million on hand of the cash to use. Again, we're anticipating a little bit more coming from the state, but it's really slow coming. Now, there's, there's another reserve, which is our, our, that, those are assigned funds, we have unassigned funds of about eight million dollars that we, we, we never use, frankly, and, and that is, that is therefore an absolute Armageddon situation. That is cash that we are required to have on hand if we're going to maintain a, a healthy standard and course rating. Most counties keep something like that back there so that there's always cash on hand. The, the funds I'm talking about using to, to balance budget is, are more of a, more fluid.
And the Armageddon money, it draws interest.
Yes, oh, yeah. In fact, we, we do those a little bit longer term and try to be a little better, get a little better with those because we don't, we don't withdraw them. We, we might occasionally, in the, in the very lean part of the year, in March, when we're not getting any revenue until the taxpayers start coming in, we may pull, pull on that because we'll have already gone through the, the set-asides for the 2026 early payrolls. We may, we may reach into that, but then as soon as, as soon as revenues start coming in from taxes and treasury, we'll put it right, right back in. So it's a temporary thing for us, but not, not much in the way of lost interest. We do, we do okay on that.
Okay.
Okay, last, last call. We have a motion, second on the table, for an increase of mileage rate of two tenths of one percent. Which would, which would raise it to four point five nine two five, correct?
Yes.
Those, in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes two to one.
I just have a comment, but I think it's very disappointing that these are the kind of things you like to have unanimous support for, and historically, there've been something that would come up that would turn into a less, a two to one vote, and this is another example of that. But I, I don't, I don't feel that not supporting something that has been presented so thoroughly and so, I think professionally, that you don't have other options if you're doing a responsible budget, and that probably ninety percent of this hundred and thirteen million dollars we've approved throughout the year unanimously. So, you know, spending the money has been unanimous, then funding it is two to one. I mean, that's, that speaks for itself. It's just disappointing.
I'd like to make one final comment, too, just again, Paul Angel, for your work, it's priceless, really, but, but even more so, Jamie, your experience in doing this over the years, and, and for those of you not who care through the whole process, he treats every penny dollar like it is own, and he is a tremendous steward, and we're fortunate to have him in that position.
I'd like to thank both Angel and Jamie as well, and Matt in the background, for support sometimes, so, but between the two and three of them, you know, Levine County's in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-nine years ago, and I still have cold, clammy hands today, so.
You gotta keep going till you.
Never changes something.
You gotta keep going till you get it right.
Yeah. All right, let me move on to the rest of the items that I have here. The second item is the, is a, an amended amendment to our agreement with Pictometry International, that's a vendor that we use for the aerial images that you find on the county parcel viewer, as well as G I S and some of the activities they do. This amendment is a, is a reduction or a deduction. Cherie has asked that you approve this amendment, which would deduct two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars from the contract that we have with Pictometry because they automatically build in attendance of their annual conference, national conference, and it's not something that Cherie or her staff attend, and so therefore, we've asked to amend it out, so this is a deduction of twenty-five hundred dollars from the Pictometry agreement.
Make a motion to approve the request for a reduction in the Pictometry contract?
I'll second the motion. Second, questions, comments? None, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, that is approved.
Okay, then I have the Disabled Veterans Exemptions from Real Estate Tax list for those who've met the requirements of the program. They are Jose Martinez of Miller Street, Palmyra, Michael Becktold of Franklin Avenue of Lebanon, Dion McGarrow of Cloverfield Drive, Lebanon, and Donald Mills the fourth of Oxford Road, Anvil.
I will salute.
Second.
Motion, second, questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye. On the same side, that is approved.
Okay, next I have a, an application for a loss prevention grant from our property and liability insurance carrier, Pennsylvania County Risk Pool. They annually provide a, a grant to the county to use for any loss prevention activities or expenditures that would reduce our risk. And in this case, the safety committee is recommending to you an application for three hundred dollars to remove two maple trees on the county probation services property. These trees have been causing damage to our sidewalks, buckling the pavement and sidewalks, creating tripping hazards for pedestrians, and leading to costly repairs, so the removal of those trees would eliminate that hazard.
Make a motion to remove the two maple trees at a cost of three hundred dollars.
Second. Motion, second, any questions or comments? None, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, that is approved.
Okay, we received a letter from Angelo Luciotti, the executive director of Lebanon Transit, regarding appointments and reappointments to members of the Lebanon Transit Board of Directors. They are recommending the reappointments of Jason Kratzser and John Finsky. Both have, will, have expressed their willingness to continue on another five-year term. However, David Warner is not seeking reappointment, and so that will create a vacancy, and they are, are recommending Tom Brandt to fill that vacancy. Tom previously served on the Lebanon Transit Board from nineteen ninety-one through two thousand two, and who brings experience and institutional knowledge to the board, if you point it. So.
Second.
Motion, second, questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, that is approved.
Okay, next I have a change order for the, for Phase One A of Lebanon County Municipal Building Renovations. This is something you, you've considered before. Joe Connor was here from Beers Hoffman. If you recall, when we did the bids for the renovations, we did not receive a bid for the electrical contract. Therefore, we went back to Arthur Funkenson's, the general contractor bid, as well as Shannon Smith, to see if they would be willing to give a change order price for electrical contract. And so we have that, and that change order came, is coming through funds for Stoner Electric to be the, to do the electrical portion of those renovations at one hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars. That, again, was part of the original amount, it's just being done as a change order in lieu of it being awarded as a bid. Ask your approval on that.
Make a motion to approve the electrical change order of one hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars.
Second. Motion, second, questions, comments? None, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, that is approved.
Okay, I have a hotel tax grant fund application from the Singing Cedar Chorus for their annual show at the Church of the Good Shepherd. This is a total project cost of three thousand nine hundred dollars for the show. They are requesting a grant of twenty-five hundred dollars. They note on their, in their letter of request that they anticipate two hundred and fifty patrons will attend this event from outside of Lebanon County. Last year, they anticipated two hundred, we got one hundred and eighty-five, and they are putting together a more aggressive program to invite more out-of-county patrons for this year's event.
Based on some of the comments made at the last time, we, I, I heard that you didn't want to do more than half of their total budget. So is their total budget thirty-nine hundred dollars?
A thousand.
And so should it be, like, nineteen fifty, or whatever half comes to?
Not necessarily. That was a one-time interpretation of that particular application. That's not to say that everyone coming to Fort now is going to be fifty percent of, you know, so I think you're reading too much into my last vote.
Your motion is for twenty-five hundred. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, but I find inconsistency unacceptable.
Any other questions or comments? None, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, that is approved.
And last, lastly, yes, the item that was added to the agenda, this is for the Renova Center. Janelle has indicated that Cedar Haven has changed their procedures in, in terms of providing a dietitian for the residents, and we now need to go out and contract for our own. So she has sought one and, and, and found one in, in a company called Nutrition That Works LLC. They are willing to provide the service at seventy-five dollars per hour, and her estimate is that this may require ten to twenty hours a month for dietitian services to their residents. And so she is asking for your approval on the agreement with Nutrition That Works LLC for that service.
Some.
Second. Matt, do you have? Okay, the second, any questions, comments? None, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, that is approved. Anything else, Jamie? Anything else to go to the order?
Yes. All right, Jamie, back to the budget, sorry, twenty-nine years. It lays on the table for twenty days?
Yes.
And then is there going to be a special meeting to vote it?
On the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-fourth at nine-thirty, probably the only reason for the meeting, but that's what it falls.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Not while any motion adjourns.
Second.
Adjourn, thank you all.